Controller shit. No, I saw it too. Trust me, I spent two hours last night. We're good. Good morning. Like to welcome everyone to the February twentieth meeting of the Board of Selectmen at Town Hall at eight thirty A M. Before you have the agenda for today's meeting, could I get a motion to approve today's agenda? Amy, and then, and it's unanimous, sorry. And then, moving on to the minutes, could I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on February sixth?
So.
Second. It's unanimous. Okay. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address, B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. Is there anyone who wishes to make any comments? Okay, moving on then, Wavine Art Fair, approval of permission by the Arts Center to have an art fair. Oh, there we go. Good. I wasn't sure where you were. Hi, Hillary.
Hi. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. But the Carriage Barn Art Center would like approval to host our second annual Wavine Park Arts Festival, which we had last year for the first time, which was a huge success. The festival is open to the community. It's a free event. We coordinate artists' performances, workshops for kids, artist demonstrations, as well as the exhibit and sale of paintings, sculpture, photography, handmade jewelry, ceramics. The Carriage Barn does a during process to select the artists who apply to be a part of this, and each, each of them have a ten by ten display pace, uh, display area, which is all set up in the sort of vicinity outside the Carriage Barn, around the courtyard of the Carriage Barn, up to the Wavine, to the Powerhouse Theater, and also the parking circle above the Powerhouse Parking Area. So this would require a temporary closure of just the portion of the road that sort of leads down the hill towards the Carriage Barn from eight to five. The festival would be from, from ten to four. The attendance would be about seventy-five people at all time, including the, the participating artists and volunteers who are helping, and then probably around a hundred to a hundred and fifty guests per hour based on last year. The Carriage Barn files a special event permit with the town. We also provide our insurance rider coverage to the town of New Canaan. We produce all of the directional signage for parking and attendees in the park to just direct people that day. There were no issues last year with, with parking or anything. The restrooms at both the Carriage Barn and the Powerhouse Theater are available for attendees, and any garbage that was generated was, was disposed of at the Carriage Barn's dumpster. I don't know if you all have the, the sort of one sheet, but on the second page is just a few highlights from last year. We do, in addition, partner with several other community nonprofits to give them the opportunity to be a part of this and sort of highlight their organizations as well.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions from board? I have, I just have one. Do you foresee any need for police coverage that, at that event?
Um, I do not. Last year, we had a very good, strong turnout. It was a beautiful day. We had probably a thousand people throughout the day. And yeah, there really were, were no issues. John Howe and his crew put out the barriers that we just set up in the morning at each end of the road, and there, there were no issues with that, so I, I don't think that would be necessary.
And maybe, maybe we just, you touch base with like Russ Kimes or somebody, just so, you know, God forbid there's, anything happens there. We'd love to be able to make sure that we have belts and suspenders and everybody's playful for anything like that. I, I love the idea. I grew up going to these things. It's, it's, you know, nice to see that we're bringing it here into our community. It's a great, you know, a great community event. So thank you so much for all your efforts in putting this together. So.
Thanks.
Order up the same kind of day, Hillary.
I know.
I know. I put it in my calendar already, both days. So.
Great.
Yeah, I think it's great. So if I could get a motion to approve permission for the Carriage Barn Art Center to host a one-time art fair in Wavine Parks on Sunday, October sixth, with rain date of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, in which artwork will be available for purchase.
So.
Steve, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Hillary.
Thank you.
Moving on. New Canaan Farmers Market, Alexis, yeah, Zayz, Gazy. Are you there, Alexi?
I'm here. Good morning.
So why don't you tell us, I guess, you're seeking approval to, you once again host the Farmers Market and allow for off-season pickup of merchandise through December, through March twenty-ninth. Any, any updates you want to give us?
Uh, the farmers and the vendors are actually anxiously getting ready to get out there and be back to the community. This will be our twenty-sixth season, so that's a a pretty good achievement to have a farmer's market that long. And we've expected to increase the market this year a little bit with a few extra vendors. We love the nonprofits in town, and we're expanding to maybe a nonprofit or two from the Connecticut to get Connecticut organizations involved. And the artisans love to come out. People have really given us a good support through the years, so we'd like to be back. And also, the Carriage Barn, we're celebrating spring, March third, to give a plug to the Carriage Barn. Hillary is great. We've had a, this will be our second brunch, so we hope everybody joins us.
Any questions?
You know, how does it work with vendors? Can vendors, do they have to pay to be a vendor? Or do they just sign up to be a vendor? I mean, just, I just, how does it, I know it's been around for a while. I'm just curious how it actually function, functions from a logistical standpoint. You know, is it first come, first served, or is it, you know, in terms of setting up and stuff like that?
Well, I do have a waiting list. Vendors inquire through email, and I send them an application. First, I ask them if they do have qualifications to be at the market. One of the qualifications is they need to be a Connecticut business, and also if they have insurance and proper licensing. And then if they do qualify and there is a space, and their items are complementary to what we already offer, then I send them an application and then we go from there. The fees are minimal. I try to keep them at a minimal. I work on a shoestring budget because a lot of the small businesses are, are hurting, and, you know, we all have to stay alive, so I manage the market as minimally as I can. And they come and they set up and they, we all obey our rules as much as we can, and everybody gets along, and it's a great time.
Oh, yeah, no, it's terrific. I was just wondering the logistics of how it worked. You know, somebody pay for the season? Do they pay for certain space in terms of?
They basically, I could send you an application so that you know what, what the market is all about, but they do pay for their seasonal for the whole year every other week, and then I do have a gal who only sells dahlias, so she only comes for four weeks, so I work around that. The artisans, they can come three times per year, limiting once a month. Last year was kind of hard with all the rain, so I ended up having your people doubling up because of the issues with the rain and getting rained out, so they had rain dates. But I'm flexible with vendors for the most part.
Great. I'd, I'd love to see the application, just to understand how it works, but it's, it's such a thing for the town. I'm just, I'm just kind of curious the logistics.
All the farmers and the food vendors have to supply an application to the Health Department, and that's seventy-five dollars. Just to give you an idea, for the whole year for a farmer, a ten by ten space is four hundred dollars for thirty-four weeks for a ten by ten tent, and the vendors usually have two or three, the farmers. A non-farmer is five hundred for a ten by ten tent for the whole year. So if you break it down minimally, it's less than twenty dollars per week. And that covers the cost of insurance, social media. I do a mailing list every year, so it basically meets the expenses.
How do you, how do you dole out, like, who gets what spot?
Uh, well, we've been doing this so long that the, the regular vendors have their spot from previous years, and we keep that, that way. And then as I have vendors pull out, then there's empty spaces for new vendors.
Lexi, one of the things that it's amazing how folks going in and out of the lumberyard lot, it's very, very organized. There's plenty of parking there. How did, when, when the, when the peak times come, I know we've had a police presence there once in a while. How does that get triggered? Is it just, do you know how many people are going to come on any given weekend, or, or does that just happen sort of automatically?
Well, without parking lot, we haven't had a need for traffic director.
Once in a while, once in a while, there, once in a while with stewards there and, and going, you know, up and down, there have been, but once in a while, someone has stopped to try to move traffic along because it does back up there, but that's only on really peak, peak days, so, but you don't, you don't, you don't trigger that, then.
We haven't monitored it because nobody's brought it to my attention that it was a problem.
Oh, it's not a problem. It's just, I was just wondering about, like, there's certain weekends that are really busy there and others that aren't, so it's, I'm just bringing it up as a question of who, how, how does that actually work? I guess if somebody observes it, they just, somebody comes in and moves, moves traffic along, but that's fine. You're doing, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. We have three entrances and exits in that parking lot, so that is a huge help.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, then I will ask for motion to approve a request from Alexis Gazzy, Gazy, Market Master to hold the, that's quite a title, Market Master. I like that. To hold the summer New Canaan Farmers Market at the Lumberyard Parking Lot on Saturdays, ten to two P M, from April twentieth, twenty twenty-four to December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and to allow off-season pickup only in the same location through March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve. Second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
You too. Okay, can I keep fire testing consortium?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, what we have is a contract, a no-cost contract, uh, that I was asked to enter into with firefighter app, but they're really called police app. So what this is, our Connecticut Testing Consortium decided to partner with firefighter app to increase candidate number and diversity, uh, and everything that goes with hiring and getting the firefighter testing out there as far as knowing it's happening. So they chose to use a firefighter app, which very minimal cost to the candidate for them to get into the process and then take the test. The testing is also on the cost of the candidate. So the police app felt that the towns involved would need to sign a contract, because what they don't want is us to start taking our own applications and taking the funding away from them since the chief's organization is not paying them for anything. It's all coming, the cost all comes from the candidate. Their profit comes from the candidate. So that's really what the contract is saying, is that we can't go ahead and do our own applications and charge for them.
Have we always charged candidates to apply to be? Or is this, is this the, this app imposing a cost to people who want to be a firefighter that wasn't there before?
Well, consortium's been, they're about four rounds of testing now. They've always charged the candidates. Uh, I don't know what New Canaan did prior to going to the consortium. I'm not sure if there was a small B for them, but there's usually always a charge on them. By us going, by the chief's organization going with police app, and we're using the Fire Police Service testing for the actual test, it's really reduced the cost of the candidate. So that's what one of the goals of the Connecticut Chiefs was, to reduce that cost.
But there is an administration. You have to, you have to review it, you have to.
I was just worried that, you know, apps, they don't do them for the sole philanthropic reason. I just wanted to make sure that this was something that was, you know, putting barriers up to people who wanted to be a firefighter.
Now, this is, the chiefs have been working actively to try to reduce that and increase the numbers and including the diversity on the testing process.
What about privacy and the information that goes in there? How does that, you know, how does, how is a candidate protected in the town protected? Is there a?
Uh, I, as far as the police apps handling all of their data, and once the testing company finishes the testing process, they're going to pass on the results to firefighter app. So the, the actual privacy, I probably can't speak of for them. But then what happens is all as I see is the department, all the departments will see a list, uh, three lists depending on what category they're in, that we can select off of. And all of it has their, it, it has their name and address and contact information. That's all we see.
We did have legal review this, just because it's a new.
Yeah, the contract is, but that is probably above and beyond. I would think that privacy question is bigger than.
Than that, yeah. Yeah, just all these apps, they're collecting all the data, and that's how they make their money.
Yeah, and just as a captain just whispered to me that, that the police department's been using police app for a while for New Canaan Police Testing, and that was one of the reasons why I'm back and forth with legal, because we didn't want to, we want to make sure that our agreement with them isn't affecting the police department and what they do. So that's why a couple of things got changed over here.
Do you know what a while means? Like, how long? Like, the police will?
For police app?
How long, how long you guys been using this?
At least a couple of years.
And it's been good?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, it's been great. It's, it's a huge reduction on our resources to try to run these tests.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They pull the candidates together, you give them parameters for test score wise. They gather together, present it to you, and then you go from there.
Yeah, Norwalk used it for their la, last two tests now, and they had over twelve hundred applicants. A very diverse group that this company is able to reach out and bring those people in, which is great. Yeah, bringing a ton, you know, tons of people in to take the test. So basically, asking permission, I, it's a doc you sign that they asked me to sign. That's kind of the permission I'm asking. It's just to go ahead with that agreement based on legal's changes and so we are.
All right. So could I get a motion to approve a request from the fire chief for approval to enter into an agreement with policeapp.com doing business as firefighterapp.com to facilitate the employment application process at no cost to the town of New Canaan for a period of three years from effective date?
So much.
Amy, Steve, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Russ and Melby, tri-band radios.
One of our favorite subjects.
I'll start. So, and this, we're basically, we're looking, we're finally at the point to ask for approval of purchase of our tri-band radios. Yeah, it's, it's been a, a lot of hurdles, you know, with the state's communication, uh, people to get there. Based on our budgets, the fire department's going to ask for five tri-band radios from Northeastern Communication not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred, and OEM is?
Three, and then two that are going to the fire department, and that was approved by the Board of Selectmen to transfer from cost savings, uh, board finance, sorry, here. Cost savings from our fuel trailer project. Thanks to the folks at Highway, they found ways we could save a bunch of money on that, and so it is a, was a budgetary transfer from that line to support fire.
So ultimately, we're going to have seven radios in the fire service, which is taking care of all our on-duty people, especially, you know, the key thing is when they go mutual aid, uh, to have these radios. One for myself, and then.
One of mine is going to stay with me. And thanks to the state, it was a long process.
Might want to do your cost request.
Yeah, the same, forty-nine thousand five hundred, because I'm, it's three plus two for him that are coming out of my budget. Uh, and a thanks to the state communications team. I mean, it's been a long six months, but we managed to successfully get approvals signed across eleven towns in Fairfield County for us to, everyone to share their radio frequency.
So everyone's going to talk now.
Well, we'll be able to talk to everyone else. They also, the nice thing about this project that I was leading for the last, I guess it's been a year, is that they also will be able to program everyone else's frequencies, including ours, which was a mighty project, but we got it done and signed by all executives and chiefs across the region. And then these radios are actually capable of doing it, which is the benefit of the all band.
Did the technology change in six months? Only kidding, with the radios.
Probably. Don't ask that question.
Probably, and yeah, every time we ask them, the price goes up, so we're, we're, we're losing.
In this, the money's in, already budgeted.
Yeah, it's a couple, couple of years of capital on my side, and yeah, we ended up selling some old equipment that was not serviceable anymore. That's also paying for that. It's going to go into this.
This may be above your pay grade, but we've, over the years, we've talked about this, the different emergency towers in town and how things are bouncing off. Is, are these radios capable of operating without that, or do they need, are they relying on those towers that we currently have?
There are two answers to that question. The first is, because of the fact that it'll be programmed with a number, eleven different towns worth of stuff, plus state and federal interoperability frequencies, we, we will be able to use our regular day-to-day police-fire EMS public work, certain infrastructure which we own as a town. And then because it is all band, our infrastructure is on one hundred fifty-five megahertz. Regular radios can't talk on the eight hundred megahertz that is the state's system. These can't. So even if our infrastructure, for whatever reason, we've actually had a couple of times in the last year where a fiber line got cut, uh, there were issues. This would mean these radios could just flip right over to a, the state backbone and use the U S C system, which we contribute with, uh, as do all the towns in the region, as all that.
So I have a question about, you have a request for five tri-bands and five all-bands. Why are we even?
It's just different terminology there.
It's the same, okay.
Yes.
Following up on Steve's question, because when, when you're not in the weeds in this, it, it gets confused. Would it be possible to do a summary page for thus us to be like, here are our communication radios, and we have met this, you have this many of these, and they work off this. We have this many of these, and it'll work off, just so people, because I know we've been trying to figure it out over time, and I get a little lost in terms of what is, but it might be just great for me to say, okay, with this, we have X, Y, and Z, and that would just be just a summary, and I think everyone might be curious.
Fire and, yeah.
I have most of the data already, because I want to pay an inventory.
And if you can do it in a way that's like for, for dummies, you know, like, please, our community, emergency communication for dummies, just like, we have this, we pay for this, and it's going off these towers, right? And then we have these, and that would be great.
Oh, yeah, happily. And all the stuff that we own up to this point can only talk on our own infrastructure, that one band of our town infrastructure. They're the first ones that are capable of doing multiple.
Well, so with, that's, I mean, the point to carry on this cell idea is that it, the redundancy has given us the opportunity to say, hey, we're finally away from some of the issues that we've had with putting up more of these towers, which would be great if that's the case. Well. Are, are we, are we saying that using these radios and the issues we've had with dead spots in town, the, the fire truck getting stuck in that, you know, in that hurricane, in that time and all? I mean, where are we with that? I mean, will these radios solve that type of issue?
The day-to-day operations for police-fire EMS remain on our standard, our core one fifty-five band, which is, we have, uh, fire probably has, I guess, forty radios, police has probably seventy or sixty that are single-band radios for our town infrastructure. So their dispatch centers, the person is sitting answering the phone, working the radios are all set for that one band.
And within that band, it covers, like, dead spots, right?
Public safety radios is actually very good. As opposed to, I think that's where people get confused, to separate the conversation about cell coverage versus public safety radios. Our public safety radios, which was a redone five years ago or so, is actually very good coverage for us. The only downside is, is we pay to maintain that infrastructure with the bonded item that I go with every, which is the Motorola agreement. So it means that because we own the equipment, we own the servers, we own the software, we have to keep it up to date and or do this replacement program, which is why longer term, maybe it makes sense to go to the state infrastructure where they own the equipment, they own the stuff. But it'll be a big capital because all of those radios, because either the first ones we've ever bought that can talk on this other band that's the state is on, we'd have to replace all the equipment. We have an app to be able to use it. So we're waiting to see how Wilton and Norwalk are close with them.
Yeah, so the, the, these radios do not fix the question you asked. So if we, if we had a crash of our system, those five, seven radios would be able to operate on another system to keep that minimal, but we wouldn't have enough of them for everybody to talk. So we won't, yeah, it doesn't fix that issue.
But if we did have enough for everybody to talk to, would we fix the issue, I guess, is the question.
Uh, in that case, just like Russ said, we might be looking at, we're on a whole different system.
Yeah, because there's two, there's, these are too expensive to give one to everybody.
Yeah, yes. I would never recommend buying all the gas for every single person because they're just too expensive.
Yeah.
If you were to go that approach, you would get single bands for most of the troops, and then these are the ones you get for management, that the ability that they can work interoperably with leaders who are coming in to help us, but not something you should buy for every single resource.
Right, and that's how we're, you know, fires departments operate in that way now. Our, all our members have their own radio, but they don't need the tri-band because if they're off-duty, coming back for a call here, or the engine goes out of serve, uh, out of town for mutual aid, they're coming back to cover. They don't need the tri-band because anyone coming to us will use our frequency that's current.
They take a volunteer from the interior, you know, they have in their car the, the single-band radio so they communicate, but they do not need.
Yeah, they won't need a tri-band.
Whereas the ones that the chief's firing is stay in the firehouse, and that's, they get recharged, they never leave the firehouse, they stay with the duty crew that's working, and the three that, for OEM are there for the big emergencies that I can handle, the key players and or people coming in, so we can communicate on these other frequencies.
So let me ask you, so these, obviously, these all-bands would work if we went to the state system because it goes on all bands.
That is definitely what we make sure of.
But, but, so the single bands that we have, is it only that we have to go to the state system and then reprogram them to be on the single band, or you have to get all new radios?
So the, the actual hardware inside of them is not capable.
Okay. And what do those run approximately? So we'd have to go over to the new system, but then, um, what would a single-band radio on the new system?
It doesn't have a future for you.
I, yeah, I have to look back to quote, they were around five, four or five thousand for the single band.
So they're only, they're like half, because these are like ten grand each.
Yeah.
It looks like.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're substantially cheaper.
So it's, it's double, but it's not cheap.
Right.
It's five grand versus ten. They're both expensive, just once.
And, and that's why moving to the state system, all these benefits, long-term, potentially, for the fact you don't have to pay for all these upkeep for your system, and you inherently can talk to the neighbors who moved to it, which is pretty much everyone around us. It is a substantial capital hurdle to replace all of this hardware in the patrol cars, the fire trucks, and then the handhelds to get to that point.
And what, at what point do you think you would be able to make, because you said Wilton is going to it this year?
Correct.
So at what point do you think you'd be able to make a decision as to whether or not you'd want to migrate over?
I would say in the next year and a half, because they're going to move over. I would give them a year to really see how it goes with them, especially with coverage, because their topography is very similar to ours.
Yeah.
Uh, which times out well, because that's when we're going to have to renew our Motorola contract.
And, and boy, do they have us in that country.
I, no one, you can't spell, I'm not believing that Motorola. The, the other thing is, is that I, I have spoken with Westport, and they said they wanted to take it on a project, and I got to see, because it's not just us that would have the same hurdle. Let's see if there's federal dollars, anything that's out there.
What does Darian use?
They are on their own system and exploring.
Like us, okay.
Yeah, but Wilton, Norwalk, Stanford, Greenwich, Westport, Fairfield, I mean, everybody is moving to the state.
You gotta think these will come down in price.
We actually got, they're just saying, but we're on.
I mean, every, all technology comes down.
Well, have you heard from Westport, like, sort of their experience? How long have they, have they been on?
They, they've been on for a while, and they've been very happy with it. I think they have a much more robust system than we.
Troubled, and go on in a while. They're, they're good. Stanford, they.
What I want to do is dig into the, I hate to say, dig into the dollars and cents of all this. What are they paying? Because the way it works is.
Because I didn't see that on the long-term capital plan, so.
Well, that's that's what it is. Through each radio site, either the state owns it or we contribute one which we then have to pay for to make sure we cover spots that don't work in our town. Needless to say, most of the state hardware is aligned with I ninety five on the American Heartway. This is the radio system they use for state police, state D O T. However, Wilton's putting up towers. They're they're adding a couple to the system. Stanford has done so as well as my understanding. So we may be good once they come online for me to drive around and test this.
Oh, we can piggyback on theirs. Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the fire chief and emergency management director to enter into a contract with Northeastern Communications in the amount not to exceed ninety nine thousand dollars for the purchase of one foot ten tri band radios. Motion.
Is it ten or is it?
It's five and five. It's five. It's five. No, it's five and five. It's five. This is five, two, and then three go to O E M and two go to the fire. Okay.
Ten altogether.
Ten altogether. I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're getting.
I'll make the motion.
Steve second. I'm in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
You.
Um, Albie, you have a big day.
Yes. Um, request to increase our northeast fire apparatus blanket P O to fifteen thousand. Uh, this is based on the cost of our estimated annual services up until the end of the fiscal year.
Any question? So what was what's the full? What's the full purchase order then once with the fifteen?
Uh.
We're we're going to institute this going forward because I I like to see the full I.
Okay. Right now I have one P, um, one request and I didn't print it out. I think it's thirty six. What was it? You have it forty six, forty six hundred?
No, 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 no.
No, forty six.
Hold on. This is the month, but then this is the Motorola.
Oh, you didn't.
I don't think I gave you, uh, yeah, there's one current purchase order for northeast fire. I think it's for thirty six hundred that's hang that's hanging out there. And we already had one right after July one. So based on our estimates with the amount of services we have left, so the apparatus still have to go out.
Yeah.
Jill and I are expecting no more than fifteen thousand for the repair bill for service.
And what apparatus is this exactly?
This is going to be various. This could be in June one.
Okay.
Yeah, one, two, seven, possibly four. So those go. It's various apparatus. But again, this is doing that one vendor. So we I can't pay the thirty six hundred dollar bill.
We've had a change in finance and that.
Yeah.
The aggregate of of a vendor is now it used to be Cook project. They become like that first serve for project. Now, if there's one vendor that's going over the ten thousand dollar limit, we're bringing it forward.
Which makes sense, which is why we have a very large agenda today.
Exactly.
That's where we are. This thirty six hundred dollar one's bringing us to the ten thousand and.
Lots of transparency, Steve. Lots of transparency.
Thirty one items on each end.
It's a new process. Once we.
Where's Ann? Where's Ann?
Yeah, no, but it's it's good. I mean, just so everybody knows that's here and it's probably a little frustrated by the amount. It's we're trying to get control over how much we're spending with all of our vendors and, you know, and making sure that we're, you know, keeping track of, you know, where the money's going and who's getting how much for what. So it's 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 good. It's painful. It's painful changing processes. I understand. So.
So to be clear, so that basically what we're saying here is just what was the what was the the cap before was how much was it? On the on.
When we were doing individual P O's.
Right. Oh, so this is just.
All all these apparatus repairs were over the what we need. So we would go out for a regular P O
Got it.
and not ever, you know, we had a blanket account for the small stuff.
Yeah.
So if I needed switches or whatever, you know, for a couple hundred dollars, we had a blanket that was very low just for those things. And all of the big repairs would go into a true P O process. So now we're kind of figuring out how do we approach this knowing that, all right, I'm going to have like three apparatus that go next year. All right. So that's roughly fifteen grand. We're going to say five grand apiece that are going to equal fifteen total.
Right.
Of the floor. So that's kind of what we're kind of learning at the same time trying to do this because we're still in that P O process for each apparatus.
Right. So it's just a slow transition and we'll we'll get there. And I think we all need to be, you know, mindful that this is a new process and, you know, that we'll we'll get there. It's, you know, so.
I applaud the transparency.
Yeah.
Anyway. But I do not applaud the time.
Sorry.
Going to go a lot faster. Start asking for these.
I know. Okay. Um, so any other questions or not? I could I get a motion to approve a request from the fire chief to increase a previously approved purchase order by fifteen thousand dollars?
So moved.
Two fifty two. Two two fifteen thousand. I think you said we.
Move it to fifty thousand.
Two fifteen.
Oh.
It's written.
Oh, oh, by fifteen thousand. It's written. It's two fifteen or is it by?
I'm bringing it up to fifteen thousand.
Oh, this is written incorrectly then.
Oh, okay.
To increase a request by fifteen thousand, we're bringing it up to fifteen?
Well, mine said two that I said it.
So it that's an important distinction. So we need to understand what the distinction is.
Two fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's fine. Up two.
All right. So it's two. Okay. I'm going to reread the motion. Sorry, because it's or I'm just going to read.
Reading what I said.
Okay, so it's two.
I get reading.
Approval, yeah. Approval of a request from the fire chief to increase a previously approved purchase order to fifteen thousand dollars.
Typically say is not to exceed.
Okay.
Two and then.
Yes. Second, it's unanimous. And you know, in the future, what we're going to do is we're going to have what the increase is and then the final. So we all have a good sense of.
We're going to pop it a form.
Yeah, it'll it'll be easier.
Right.
Moving along. It's painful. Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Okay, Tiger Sax Basketball Court Reconstruction. Oh, and I see we've got Jen and Jessica online. Oh, and Brian's online too. Hello, everybody.
Good guess.
Morning.
Uh, this is a completed project. I'm going to let Jess Jessica talk first.
Thank you. On break week, I see palm trees in the background where Jess is.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Twenty degrees when I left for the office this morning. So.
Oh, that is pink.
I know. That's not nice. That is not nice. And I started sleeping in the.
There you go.
Or Jess.
Do you want to share your screen or you want me to do a video?
Um, I can share mine. Or I guess, I don't know, Tiger, you may have to as host. I don't know if I have the ability to.
Yeah, you do. We made you co host.
Okay.
Nice. I just want to ask, can you guys hear me? Okay. I've been having some trouble with my headset.
We can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks, Jess.
Yeah.
Um, all right. So we are here today to share with you guys, I guess, to introduce us. Sorry, I'll start with that. I'm Jessica Knowles and Jess Hutter is here and we are the P T C Sax P T C co presidents. And we wanted to to share with you guys our renovation plans for Hawks Court, which is the blacktop area that which includes the basketball courts behind Sax Middle School. And so we have an agenda that to share. We'd like to share with you kind of the reasoning behind the project, what our process has been to date, and our plans for the space, and then talk about some of the initial budget for planning and our fundraising, and then we can open it up to Q and A for you guys. Um, so Justin, split to the next slide, please.
Yep, on by Hawks Court.
Yep, yep, sorry. So I just so this year, sorry, I was looking at something in front of my background. And this year we had our annual fundraiser, which we call Celebrate Sax, and we focused our fundraising efforts on renovating and refreshing Hawks Court. We gave it that name this year. We thought it was cute. Um, and our campaign was called Just Play, and we wanted to highlight to the Sax students and to the community how important it is and how fun it is to just get out and play. Um, and we had activities and we had a, you know, basketball team come in. We tried to have kids, um, you know, know that they can go out and play, but it doesn't have to be just like, you know, like basketball, we, you know, you can go out and find like a nice place to read or or, you know, walk around with your friends, just get them, you know, outside enjoying the the space that we have out back. Um, and so in total, we had four hundred and twenty six families that donated to our campaign and we raised over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, and then we the reason why we want to focus on Hawks Court and and why it needs to refresh. Um, first, I'd say Jess, maybe go to the next slide so they can see, they can see what we're talking about. Um, this is the court currently. And as you can see, it's, you know, lines are faded. There's a lot of cracks. Um, in the bottom picture, you can see that the two courts are different sizes. Neither are regulation middle school. You know, size so that, you know, there's weeds growing through the cracks. The fencing needs some updating. So we but but really, this isn't the most utilized space. Um, we, Mr. Gussage jokes, other than the cafeteria at Sax. So there are kids of all grades, all ages at school genders. Um, it's used, you know, on the weekends by the community after, you know, soccer practice, lacrosse practice, kids come and play. Um, you know, there's always pickup basketball games. So we just thought it would be a great thing to do for our school and also for the greater community to get the space refreshed and looking great and have it, you know, be playable for the next twenty years. And then Jess, I want to turn it over to you.
Yeah, perfect. Um, so as Jess said, Celebrate Sax generated over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in donations. Um, so taking it kind of a step back, we actually started this project or process last summer. Um, we met with Tiger and John Howe at the course and kind of walked through them, just, you know, who would they like us to use for the engineering? So we engaged McCord Engineering to provide us with some site plans. Um, if you've been to the courts at all, you'll know that there's a crown that kind of runs in the middle of the two courts. So our focus with them was how flat we would actually be able to get the surface. And I think Tiger can confirm this, that they were able to get it down to about a one percent, which would be great. Um, we released the R F P on January eleventh, January eleventh, had a mandatory walkthrough on January twenty fifth. We received two bids on February first, um, and the lowest qualified bidder once we went through all the numbers was is Burns Construction. Um, both bidders knew that the plan is work will commence on or around June seventeenth, depending on what the last day of school is. I guess need to see what kind of snow we get over the next few weeks, um, and that they have to be done one week prior to the first day of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Um, we did the one week prior just to give us a little buffer in case they need a little extra time getting equipment out or finishing things up. Um, wrong way. Ah, sorry. Technical difficulties. Um, so our plans for the space, we're very excited about this. Um, nothing is changing from the footprint of the area. Um, the only small change in this is still within the current fenced in area is there's a curb at the very back up against the playground. So we pick up about eighteen inches to two feet of space by getting rid of that curb. Um, the curb, to be honest, is a safety hazard. It comes up against our four square court. Weeds grow. It doesn't and it isn't serving any purpose. Um, we're going to replace the asphalt surface with new asphalt and then there will be a sport court coating put down, regrading the space to remove the crown. Um, both will be able to get two equally sized courts um, in the space that are not full N B A sized courts, but they're more in line with middle school courts, um, and will repaint the lines for the four four square court. Um, so in addition to the two basketball hoops per court, we're also going to put an additional practice hoop in the back corner for kids who just want to play knockout or, you know, kind of shoot around without taking up one of the full courts. Um, we are going to purchase and provide new tables and umbrellas for opposing corners for kids who don't want to play four square, don't want to play basketball. Maybe they want to sit and read. Maybe we they want to play board games, um, you know, kind of just so they have a space as well. Um, and we will be replacing the existing fencing with slightly more attractive, um, new black eight foot fencing. Um, so these are the numbers in front of you. So the winning contractor bid to complete the work is one ninety, just call it a hundred ninety three thousand four hundred dollars to give you some rounding and the end of it's cut off on my screen. Um, the ten thousand dollars for the new hoops. Um, the quote we have, and this may come in a little lower for the tables, is ten thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars and sixty cents. Um, as part of our fundraising, we did say if donors donated over a certain amount, their name would go on a recognition plaque, which will be put on a rock somewhere in or around the court area. Um, that quote is two thousand six hundred sixty five dollars and eighty cents. And we'll purchase some new trash receptacles to help out our custodians a little bit. Um, and then, you know, the nice outdoor ones of those will come in at one thousand three hundred fifty eight dollars eighty five cents. So the total cost of the project will be two thousand two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars and ninety cents. Um, and then here is just, these are renderings. It may not look exactly like this, but just so you get a sense. I'm not sure we can actually do the Sax logo in the middle. Um, but you know, it's just, it's going to be a much nicer, safer space for our students. And so any questions?
Any questions? Give me.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so it's amazing. You've raised a hundred sixty thousand for this. So the cost of the project is two seventeen. But where's the delta coming from?
So we have underspent our budget over the last couple of years. Um, so I guess, starting back, we budgeted, uh, we have a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in the budget for this project. Um, and we've underspent our budget over the last couple of years. We expect to do the same this year. So the delta is coming from our financial reserves.
Great, great. And and with with the court and the surfacing, Tiger, correct me if I'm wrong, is there like a guarantee on how long the surface is going to last? Didn't we have a problem with the tennis court? I I just in terms of, again, you guys are investing so much money. So, you know, um, it, you know, is this is this surface guaranteed? And then how? What's the the reasonable useful life on this before we will need to do some maintenance on it going forward? And I mean, it getting kids outside and playing, I think it's phenomenal. I'm just wondering kind of where we are in terms of exposure down the road for for the project.
Yeah. So to answer your question, it's about five to ten years, including. So there'll be a little bit of maintenance is required as it goes forward. We haven't looked at some one of our facilities. Um, the tennis court did run into a couple of problems with some some areas that were repaired. The majority of stuff that was fixed was underboring.
Okay. So do you do we get a warranty on this as well?
Well, yeah. So the interesting thing with this, it's a the the two bidders that we had. So just so you know, we we went out to a public bid, okay? And then we solicited directly from SIS, several bidders, four of which chose not to bid, okay? Two bid, okay? Um, and then the was also picked up by a bidding service called Construct Connect. So at that point in time, I don't know how many people see that that one thing, but let's let's well over a hundred would see there and they just chose not to get that. But the two bidders themselves are Burn Construction and Indian Tennis. Indian Tennis is done. The tennis course for us is done. The football course. They are actually working together now whereby Burns is the primary. Andy will come in and do the code, right? So the person that normally does all of our coatings for all of our courts will be doing this. And then their warranty will apply.
How long is the warranty?
I'll have to check. I don't know.
Because I just as someone who has to do this regularly in my home, um, who's how are we planning? Because it five years is a pretty good stretch. Um, you know, they don't those coatings don't last a long time. Um, so how are we planning to maintain that coding? The asphalt will last. It's the coding that you're going to have a problem with.
Right. That that's something that we'll have to discuss. So as soon as we're going forward, we'll call to the parks department for our state.
So do we have the coding broken out on on the bid?
How much it costs?
Yeah, the coding independent.
We should we should just know what, I mean, look, it's terrific, but it's going to incur some maintenance.
That that the coding will definitely need regular maintenance and, you know, um, so we just, I think everybody participating should understand what they're signing up for with that coding.
That's fine. I can also ask ending to give us a a price estimate on maintenance going forward as well, just so we have.
Okay.
So what what they're feeling is on maintenance and what the what the cost would be going forward for the course themselves.
And if the courts currently, and this sounds like it's kind of an odd question, but not, uh, you're going to put trash receptacles there. Are there trash receptacles there right now? Because I know the park it's a it's an issue whether you want receptacles or, you know, are you guys okay with that? No, because I need to.
Well, I'm a fan of trash cans.
The custodians, the custodians are doing it now.
Sorry, what did you say?
I was saying that there are receptacles there. I've actually seen the custodians emptying them. Um, I think you have to because again, the kids are going out there straight after lunch. So you have to have something out there. And if we can just make them a little, you know, maybe nicer and get utilized more. I mean, you guys know there's so much trash all over the field and the course as it is. So I think at least giving the kids the opportunity to do the right thing would be helpful.
Yeah. And I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page with that, because I know we're always like, do you put them in or do you not put them in, you know, issue. So, but that's, so it's a custodian at the school is responsible for these.
I've seen them. Yeah.
That's right. The, hi, good morning. The, the custodians clean it out. We've got 12, 1300 students that are going out there on a daily basis during this, during the week. It's the, and then on the weekends with, you know, there's overflow, there's kids on the field, there's kids always running around. So always a little more cleanup on a Monday morning, but the, yeah, they're buying the trash cans and others that, well, that will be easier and better for the custodians to use. There's so many kids that walk out there every day. We, you definitely need that and they keep up with it.
Tiger, some of the, some of the sidewalk around the court has broken up as you walk in there. Are we planning on trying to fix that while we're there or?
That'll be on us. Yeah, we can, we can talk to the contractor, but that's not responsible. We'll take a look and see. Saks itself, the parking lots of Saks, the, yeah, we have money in their budget for this year's two phase approach for the parking lots. That's all was to take care of curbing and some of those that they had.
Yeah. Cause they went over on Sunday and right, literally as you walk in there, it's really crumbled as you, as you walk through.
Yeah. You gotta make a delineation between the two projects. It wasn't fair to ask them for that. So we said, okay, we'll just go to the existing fence line for the fence line in would be the project itself. Anything for the fence line out will be others' responsibility. And the only thing that we have is that the grades will match so that we don't have to touch the entire sidewalk. So that was one of the design parameters for McCord was the, the, the grades at that end of the sidewalk and the parking lot end would match. And then we, we have enough room on the backside to run whatever grades we need, whatever grade we need running to the backside, as I was mentioning.
Cause you currently have a drain on the right, right rear there. Is that where all the water sort of drains back to that side or is that?
It's actually, it's, it's got a little bit of a different sheet flow now and we, we're with this, we're putting in some additional drainage and then a gravel separator, so or a gravel spreader, I should say. So McCord's done a very nice job working through it. I had Maria review it as well. So we've done a nice job trying to mitigate, you know, it's a large expanse, but they've done a nice job of mitigating the, the storm.
And then in terms of neighbors and what, what the neighbor should expect during the construction and after, you've got an eight foot fence here, which now there's a much smaller fence. So that's good, I guess, right? So, and then there's a stockade fence that, that the neighbors have, you know, at the property line there. So they're not going to see any kind of change there.
They shouldn't see anything. No, but the, the larger, the, the reason for the, the taller fencing is because the balls are bouncing out. It's the parking lot or it's the other player. So that was the reason for the additional fencing in that area. But they shouldn't see anything. The, the construction will be the construction, but it'll be normal Monday to Friday, you know, normal work hours. We shouldn't see any reason to, uh, to expand those hours into, into a Saturday or Sunday. I think that they've got ample time in their contract. They understand. I met with Burns twice on this project post, when they, they were determined to be the, you know, the parent of their, um, to see, oh, timing, speaking about the contract itself, whether, you know, whether or not all the numbers were, were, that they felt comfortably could complete the project and they were, they were very much in favor. They wanted, they wanted, they want to come to this project. They're very excited about it.
So timeline is, are we trying to get this done in the summer when the kids aren't there?
Yeah. It's, it's written multiple times in the, in the contract that it's June 17th to August 24th or August 17th, I'm sorry. Right beginning of your week before school starts and they can start the day after school. And their footprint is basically the, they, they're able to use the entire basketball court for their lay down area and stuff. We weren't giving them any other areas until the parking lot was utilized, whatever they needed inside, inside that fence line was theirs. Outside that fence line, they, I didn't want them to impede upon anything. The school might be going through this some.
Any other questions?
The, the only thing is I, I do think we do need to know, you know, it's every four or five years is going to be an incremental cost of X to keep these up. I think that, cause I mean, I know it's has to go to town council as well. So that information should go.
Yeah. And so, yeah, if you, just before you go to the town council, if you could, um, one, clarify the guarantee, how long, you know, how long that's guaranteed? And then also the, you know, how long that coating and, and, and the price to redo that. I mean, obviously in today's dollars. Also that is in five years, but just so everybody understands going into it before your town council presentation.
Yeah. And I want to make, I mean, I, I think we, as a town, whether it's the board of, out of the town, we really should have that sidewalk fixed before, you know, you'd hate to see this whole brand new court sitting there and then this crumbling sidewalk right outside. And I'm sure you'll take.
Okay. So it'll be a holistic approach. It just couldn't prove it to this contractor. It was out there and they raised a ton of money as well as that's the now.
Yep. Different conversation.
Thank you for all your work on this. It's an amazing project and I'm sure the kids will thoroughly utilize it. So.
Congratulations on all that fundraising. $200,000 is a heavy lift.
Thank you.
As I say, we have an unbelievably generous community. So thank you. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works in partnership with the Saks Middle School PTC and the Board of Education to enter into a contract with Burns Construction in the amount of $193,430, $193,433.65 plus a 15% contingency of $29,000 for a total cost of $222,433.65. The project entails the reconstruction of four basketball courts and a playing area at Saks Middle School. The funds are being provided by the Saks Middle School Parent Teacher Council and the project has been approved by the Board of Education. Note, per town code, the project is contingent upon approval body, overall project by the town council. Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Enjoy your break.
Thank you very much, everyone. We really appreciate the support.
Very much so. Thank you.
All right. Elm Street Events.
So Elm Street Events, the reason we're here is because this is for the father daughter dance where we're able to, with self sustaining fund, add a second seating, so to speak. And so we went over the, the $10,000 with regular contract. So that's why we're here looking for $15,601.25 to pay the contract.
And that's for both events?
That's for both, both seedings.
Yeah, both seedings. And this is all because of self sustaining, you have revenue that offsets the expenses.
We have revenue already in place more than.
Yeah, that covers the expense.
Covers the expense.
Okay. Any questions?
What is the total revenue? Do you know?
I was, yes, I was sitting there.
I'm going to ask you that. Yeah.
I don't have it exactly.
It's, we need a chance.
It was, yes.
Thanks. And we, we are taking in, just so you know, we, this year in the total self sustaining fund, we're planning, I believe on a hundred thousand from the self sustaining fund coming in to offset the town.
Yes, that's excess revenue. Yeah.
So just so.
Keep it up, man. Keep it up.
That's a great event. I mean, you know, you've had, having to have a second session is.
Yeah. It was nice to, we had a huge waiting list, you know, that filled up almost the whole second event. So.
These are, this is one of those easy ones. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So could I get a? So could I get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Record Department to enter into a contract with Elm Street Events in the amount of $15,601.25 for the father daughter dances. Funds are available in the self sustaining fund.
So.
Second. Tuning in. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay. And John, irrigation design.
Right. So this is for multiple designs or redesigns of our systems that are currently in place. One thing we've noticed, we're at the, we're at the almost 25 year mark for almost all our systems.
That was my question. How old are they? Sam?
Yes, with, with a life expectancy of 20 years. So we're, we're feeling we're doing well. Meat Park has been probably our most problematic one, the one we wanted to first. We've had some main line issues. We've had quite a few main line issues over the years from wear and tear, so to speak, of the system. That's the one we'd want to key on first. We have some money presently that's been approved for replacing irrigation systems and we want to start with meat. The main reason we want to design all the systems is so we have true, true better budget numbers. And if Koppel Field goes ahead, we need, the, the well for Waveny is over by the little small garage at Lapham Senior Center. So the main line has to go past Koppel Field. So if Koppel Field is built, we might as well know where we want to put the main, out of the way. The control system. So, you know.
So John, so we have systems in place currently that are old. Right. So is it a complete? I mean, it's the same company that put them in, right? So they're familiar with the.
It's the same designer, not the same company. This is not the company to install systems.
Okay. So this is a designer. So, um, is, is it tweaking it? Is it looking fresh? Is it?
Looking fresh now. A lot of new water saving features have happened to, to deal with. So that helps with pipe sizing, also sprinkler selection, control systems that, the whole holistic approach, even though we're using wells, so they're not governed under water restrictions or anything. We still feel we should.
Sure.
Use the least amount of water we can, making sure the water goes where we want it. So.
So this is just the design component.
This is the design.
Which would trigger an expensive, approximately how much on the other, on the put in system side of it?
You know, without, we don't really truly know yet.
A much bigger.
Yeah. A few hundred thousand dollars probably. You know, we don't have to replace our well. So that's, that's the good part. Replacing all the piping, all the sprinklers.
And, and that potential expenses future budget year?
Future budget year for, for a lot of, Meat Park will be the one that we'd like to.
Yeah. Is that normal to have a 25% design fee for a, for a project?
It's also the construction management too. And I'm really guessing on the number, you know, I'm hoping we can do that.
So wait, this design includes construction management or not?
Includes construction.
So we don't know who we're going to use, but they would manage the construction.
Still manage the construction. And they, they're also going to, besides the design, they're going to help us with the bid to evaluate the installers. Because you only get as good of a system as the installer you have. So.
Why is there a contingency for a design fee?
The main reason is by contingency there is there is some extra expenses in there, which is included in their prices. But my fear is the construction management of these projects is going to be over the next few years. So that's why I think we need to contingency. What, what's that construction management price for when they have to come down here, that type of stuff?
Construction management go into, you know, when you're actually building a project? I mean, in terms of when you.
They, they have it in their proposal.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. So they're usually, that's the design and then it moves into the, the management and the actual dollars of the construction. But it is a little unusual to have it grouped together like that.
Yeah. What, did we get any like just design?
We, we did. We had a tremendous problem finding a designer in, in the big picture. These are small systems.
Yeah.
It's a very limited, it's a very limited number of people that actually do this.
Right. Exactly. And at first they didn't need water. Really relook at our systems again.
Do we, I, I guess I, I'm still having a hard time with the construction management because one, we don't even know who we're going to hire.
Or when.
Or when. And so we're paying, we're kind of front loading a big expense.
We're not paying, we're not paying them.
Okay.
We just budgeting.
We're budgeting for it, for it now.
Budgeting, getting approvals so they can start on the plants and everything.
But that goes into, so, so that came out of this year's budget, but we may not be using the, the bill for like two, two years.
Right. We won't be, we won't be paying.
No, I know, but okay. Okay.
So the, the design service numbers, ignoring the contingency, those are solid numbers for this organization to design these one, two, three, four different district, district projects. So that's what they bid out to design it. Those are solid.
To design it. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I guess for us, we're very supportive of this, but it's, I think what all of us are saying is we'd like to see it broken out where it's the, you know, the bidding of the design and then the construction management comes back later, I guess to. But if, if you're saying, John, that you need to do this now, you know, for this one particular project, then, you know, get behind that. But in the future, I think it should be separated.
Yeah. Only from a budgetary standpoint, because it's like, we're saying we have dollars today available to pay this. Um, and, you know, what else aren't we doing? Because we're taking funds for this now that actually isn't happening. I mean, you're, or you're allocating funds now.
I can go back to, we have to break it out and come back to you for just the design portion.
Yeah. Cause I think we'd want to bid out the construction management when we bid out the, the actual installation. I don't, I mean, I, I don't.
Well, that's when the construction management is necessary.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
So if you, if you wanted.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Why don't we do that?
Two weeks is not going to be a problem.
Okay. Why don't we do that, John?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
The other, the other thing, and I know Amy and I have gone through this over the years with, uh, like at, at times we've approved sprinkler heads here, sprinkler heads there, you know, and how often that, that stuff goes on, you know, it's, I remember thinking, wow, you know, you don't really think about it, but it's, there's wear and tear on that stuff that happens because we use it all the time. And that Connor, for instance, I know we, those broke down and we had some up at Waveney breakdown and it's just a constant.
And there's constant repairs.
So, so this would be, are we talking about kind of trying to redo everything or?
On these, where these systems are, yes, release everything.
So like dig down, put the pipes in, the whole.
Brand new control wiring, random sprinklers.
But they are 25 years old, right?
They're 25 years. So part of Saks is older than that.
Okay. There you go. It'll be on an app for you.
All right.
Thanks, John.
All right. Thanks, John. So now you get the next one, for an after school programs.
Okay. This, this is simply one of our vendors that we use for before and after school programs. And no, I do not have a proper boss.
But you're going to get it.
For you. So we're looking to pay Savvy Juniors LLC $10,508 for the program, for multiple different programs that they run before and before and after school.
And, um, John, do you, do you, or does do this, do you guys do the, um, you know, the background checks on these organizations or who?
They have to do their own background checks.
And send it to you?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we do, we don't do, when we hire teachers, we don't do background checks because that's done by the students.
Right.
But if we're hiring our own people, we run background checks.
Cause I just, because I used to run this for the PTC and, you know, we would have, we did that for all these organizations. We had background checks that we ran on them before we brought them into the schools.
We require them to run their.
Okay. Okay.
So in addition to the revenues, it would be so cool to know how many people use us. And even like the father daughter dance, it would be so cute to know how many couples. I would just put that in because it's, it's kind of good to know how many people use it. Like Perk and Rex, you're the happy place.
Exactly.
Tell us how many happy people there are.
Best job in the town.
It's a sweet one.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, this is great program.
Okay. So could I get an approval of a request from the Parks and Rec Department to enter into a contract with Savvy Juniors LLC in the amount of $10,508 for multiple after school programs at the three elementary schools?
So.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Tiger. Now I'm in Memorial Plaza, really.
John's feeling beat up. John's feeling beat up.
Morning again. So this is a, in a extension of the contract, or I should say an additional amount required for a work of the nine 11 Memorial Plaza. So we have to install a piece upon, sorry, there's a fall hazard. The grade is too high in the end of the plaza. At present, we don't have a guardrail there. I don't know why when it was constructed originally, didn't have it, but speaking with the bar marshal, we need a rail around the plaza itself and then down the staircase. We had asked Benny's Custom Metal Fabricators to come in with a price. They had done that. Or Slickman approved that back in September of 23. And then when we came out to look at the, the project and delve in further, there was to be a depression in the curb to allow you to drop someone off. And that was a six inch depression in the curb. We didn't want to have a depression in the curb right alongside Elm Street for fear of a car driving up on it at the moment. Then we raised that up by six inches and made it a regular curve or conventional curve. Then we raised the, in essence, the grade on the other end. We raised the rate, create on the other end by six inches required a little bit more handrail. So originally we were going to just have the handrail straight out in front of you. If you're looking at it, as you came out to the plaza, straight in front of you, in front of the, uh, the train station and then around to the stairs, then this required us to have a little bit more on the left hand side. So we asked Benny to come back with a revised price and overall we need approval of an additional $920. We have the funds available. We just have this, have this approved. I felt it was much more prudent to come back.
much more prudent to come back since the Board of Slayman had already approved it, said best to the owner aside for not going to come back and and ask. That's the uh, the overall reason for it. It's just a question of slight design modification, which causes us to have some additional railarm required.
Questions? Does it fall within the contingency of this project?
We're a little bit above the tickets in this. So that's why we're asking for the nine twenty.
And that comes from, I mean, it's only ninety twenty dollars. Where's it come from?
Comes out of San Antonio, yeah.
Okay. So that was a fact, okay.
Well, two, two things will apply to, apply to transparency of the nine hundred and twenty dollars, but also this project is amazing. It really looks, the difference in terms of the way it looks at one of the parts of our town, the train station, Elm Street, huge improvement visually.
Yeah, that's why we'll put the pictures in.
I was gonna say, we need to have them up on the screen for the public. It's really amazing.
But and there have been a couple of residents I've I've heard from that said, hey, are we doing anything with railings there because it looks dangerous? And people actually see that it looks dangerous and obviously you addressed it, so.
Yeah, we've cleaned it out. We can see exactly if there's a fall hazard. Um, yeah, so that that'll be taken care of with this.
And there'll be railings down the stairs.
Down this, yeah, it'll all be. Paul and Brian, Paul Payne and Brian Plats are the official and our bar marshal both looked at multiple times with the contractor and uh, and agreed as to where we uh, basically directed where we.
So the opening on Elm Street will stay the way it is and the and the the fencing will be sort of a round fencing that goes around the memorial itself and then railings down, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you look on the outside of the patio all the way around and then railings down.
Got it.
Any other questions?
ADA complaint from the top.
Yes, that's correct. That was the other, that was the other concern, right? So that's why we made it flush as well. We had a little slight grade coming in off the sidewalk down to the patio. We decided that flush was excellent. That changed the grade so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to amend a previously approved contract with Vinnie's Custom Metal Fabricators LLC in the amount of nine hundred twenty dollars for the installation of guard and handrails at the Elm Street Train Station, nine eleven Memorial Plaza. This brings the total cost of the project to seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right.
So this, uh, this next item is a approval of a temporary easement for Aquarian's work at the Townman Hill pump station, their new pump station. Uh, there was a original, yeah, this is basically phase two. So phase one had a temporary easement associated with it and a permanent easement. The permanent easement and the temporary easement were both approved prior. They're through that first phase. Now they're working on the second phase. The second phase is actually to take the underground pump station out of service and remove it. Uh, it's in the embankment between the top two tiers. Won't even notice it except we'll see a hatch grass. Uh, and in order to do so, they need a little bit of a lay down area inside our parking lot. So they've asked for uh, an easement, temporary easement for this. Once they're done with that portion of the construction, the easement will go away and we'll have full use of the parking again. This was part of the, the, the first easement was a little bit larger for the construction, if you will, for the construction of the facility. This is a little bit small. We haven't had use of this area since the start of construction over a year ago. So it's, it hasn't seemed to uh, hurt us at all at present. Speaking of Stacey, we're fine. So it's just a question of allowing them access to this area. They'll fence it off, you know, they'll keep it safe. Um, and then uh, and then when they're done, um, six months from now or so, we'll get it back.
So it's a yellow area?
It's the yellow area.
Which in the, the other areas still?
The other area is actually their permanent easement. So that outside area, you can see where they have a uh, their their structure, area around their structure. And then the actual piping, the pump station piping, it's all underground. So nothing above ground in that area. That that leg going down, that's all underground.
No impact to commuters really because it's, they're already there.
Now, this was, um, these were the paid daily spaces up here.
Yeah.
And then we kind of swish a little bit more and put them down at the lot across the street, get them a little bit closer to a station. So we haven't had a concern. We're, we're, while the capacity has increased, we're full, full capacity here.
No worries about them claiming this squatter's rights here on this property. Okay.
That's. Yeah, it's specifically written in there that they have a certain timeframe and then they have to pay.
So, yeah, because I was gonna ask you about that. It says, it says they have up to two years on that spot, so, but you think it'll be six months in the long?
Yeah, according to where they are and their, their, their overall construction schedule, it should be a lot faster. Correct. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Sounds good. Okay. If I could get a uh, motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works for a temporary easement with Aquarian Water Company in order to complete installation of a new pump station at Townman Hill Parking Lot.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
So I'm joined by Jose Grinsky, our senior engineer, to talk about the next um, item.
All right, good morning. So I'm here today to um, get approval for A plus technology and security, right, security camera at the Townman Hill Lot. Um, it's the train station lot. The primary function of this camera is to monitor the police department impound lot um, up at the top, which is best practices. Um, so as this camera will perform double duty, as it will give us some coverage through the first, first coverage that we have over in that over in that lot. It's been on our overall call for security for for some years now. So um, this will provide that. Uh, it will provide the uh, the view of the Townman Hill um, lot for for the police department storage area, and it will also provide scene coverage at the top of the lot.
So what, what area is the impound area of that lot?
Straight up on top, right next to the.
Pump station?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, okay.
Where's the money? It's, it's, it's down in the P D building, is it? Or is it?
No, it's, it is not. It's, it's in our security initiatives, was part of our original security initiative for that, for that place. It's just came up to bring up quicker in the process when it was decided that Tom Chell was gonna be the.
Figured out where to put it, right? Yeah, okay. All right. And so this is all budgeted. We're all planning on doing this, this just.
It's budget.
Double duty, okay.
Yeah.
Um, over the years, we've had some car break-ins at Townman, I mean, will this help that particular area at all, or is that uh, more, it's more just the impound lot?
So it'll give you um, a panoramic view.
Yeah.
It was primarily to, the, the point of view is gonna be, you know, focused on that particular lot, but it'll give you additional views. Um, the challenge with cameras is you never have a right spot, right? Like, you know, you'd have to like basically litter the lot with cameras to be all that helpful. But uh, but it will provide some coverage, yes, absolutely.
Hey, can we move that once, like, because that's a little high. Once it's no longer an impound lot, is it, is it really expensive to move it? So it's in a more useful location long term?
We could. So the cameras are I P, I P based.
Yeah.
Um, they are five G cameras or the five G system to to talk. So it's not, there's no um, town WAN over in that area. So it's gonna be cloud based, so we can relocate that anywhere, or we could change the view of it anywhere. Or we could add another camera to, to have a more focused view um, for additional, a, a different mission.
Yeah, I mean, I know the commuter would be very supportive of having additional camera over there, you know, the, the Carter, you spark there a long time. It's just a tough spot, so.
Yeah.
How long is the uh, are the images kept?
Um, it depends on the amount of um, storage we have, but I think uh, ninety, ninety days at a minimum.
Okay, cool.
All right.
So if I could get an emotion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works as part of the town's police department renovation project to enter into a contract with A plus technology and security in the amount of nine thousand three hundred twenty four dollars and forty nine cents to install cameras and a monitoring system at the police department impound lot at Townman Hill Parking.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, West School Parking Lot.
So uh, this next item is um, the West School Parking Lot is out of bid for paving itself. This is for um, sidewalk working. Um, and curb work, yeah, in the area we needed to supply the materials. I went on to two suppliers. I asked the contractors around and the next supplier that I would actually have to ask for the price from Canada necessarily at that point in time, shipping costs, I think, would put them out of, out of the mix. So we went to uh, did we go to uh, William Stone and Swenson Granite? Uh, William Stone came in at a low bid at eleven thousand eight hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty cents. They asked for a contingency of five hundred bucks because the granite, well, I asked for four hundred feet, I might get three nine nine, I might get four one. Uh, you know, and I have to pay for what is on the truck itself, so there's always a little bit of a delta um, across the board. Um, so that brings the total cost to twelve thousand three eighty seven. Um, I don't know if you have any questions. Like, I, I did a quality take off and a, and a balancing of the two quotes because um, Swenson can only put three hundred and eighty uh, on the truck versus four hundred on the Williams trucks. You have to kind of figure out how each thing goes through, but.
Oh, is that why Swenson's more expensive? Because they can't transport?
More, more expensive for linear foot and for their.
Transportation.
Well, yes, Swenson's coming out of North uh, in uh, Hampshire, right? Yeah, the subsequent part of there that comes out of uh, North Carolina. So.
And where's our buddy William Stone?
He's in Massachusetts.
Okay, a little bit closer.
You're seeing the difference in the, in the price of the hall, specifically. The hall has started to take a lot of the other, I think, is on the next.
I mean, wasn't there a time where we were buying it bulk because we knew we were gonna use this type of gra, or is this a different type of granite than the curbing?
No, this is the exact same. So what, what we actually do is they try to fill the truck every time, right? So.
Because we, if we use the same, the same material everywhere in town.
Right.
I know you can't go to Costco and buy it, but it's like, it seems like we should, you know.
I, I fill a truck every single time, no matter what the quantity would be, right? So, so that's why I said it's really hard to put four hundred on their trucks. Swenson can only put three sixty to three eight, right? So it's a difference between the two. So I have to balance out the bid associated with that because that would be fair to both bidders, right? Once it's over four hundred feet, it's additional forty feet on another truck. Have to take that out of the bid and say, okay, now what's your unit price? What's your haul for what you're giving? Uh, but yes, to your point, we try to fill the truck to max.
And then you'll store it at the highway.
Right, to minimize that, I don't want to pay a short, I don't want to pay a short bill. So this one and the next one, the exact same thing, we maximize the truck. It just so happens that now, based on geography, we're already down the way, it's probably win one because the truck will cost a lot through the group. We used to buy exclusively to your point from North Carolina Granite.
That's fair.
And uh, they would have it here in two days, but now they're charging three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars a load. So there's no way that they can make that haul anymore. Whereas before, they were charging a zero on the haul and their per property price when your foot price was less than what we're providing from someone else around here with the haul. Now they can't do it anymore. Post-COVID, they can't do it.
Eric, all right. Um, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with William Stone in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty cents plus a contingency of five hundred dollars for a total cost of twelve thousand three hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty cents for the purchase of a granite curbing for the West School Parking Lot project. So maybe it's unanimous. And then bank goes.
Right, this next one is a very similar. Uh, the only thing I didn't mention is that I, one reason why we're out so early is because we don't get in their, their cut list. The cut list fills, and then at that point in time, you're looking at possibly not getting delivery all year. So one of the reasons why we're out uh, early. The exact same thing, ask the, the uh, the two suppliers, William Stone came in at the lower twenty three thousand forty to eighty. Again, I added five hundred dollars just for um, the difference in, in linear footage uh, for a total of twenty three thousand ninety to eighty.
Any questions?
Just at, at the parking lot, um, the pool parking lot, this curbing with, are you talking about doing the entire perimeter with this or just the, just the?
So what we're looking at, we have that sidewalk that comes in.
Yeah.
Paddle. Over right now, that's a, it's a blacktop sidewalk with a, with a a blacktop curving, a blacktop um, curve, right? So we're trying to go to a granite curve since it's directly adjacent to the roadway. Once it's directly adjacent to the roadway, we put in granite curve. So we have granite curve lining that entire stretch with a brand new concrete sidewalk associated with it. And then on the other side, the front entrance will have granite as well. So the entrance will be granite. And then the moment you get into the, the lot itself, you, the curbing itself is actually in pretty good shape. We're hoping we'll be able to maintain the majority. The bin has a thousand linear feet as an estimate of curving that we might have to replace, but overall, it's in really good shape. We're hoping to stake the lot up, put the lot back in and leave to curbing. Um, so no, we're not looking at putting granite throughout.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, if I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with William Stone in the amount of twenty three thousand four hundred eighty two dollars and maybe cents plus a contingency of five hundred dollars for a total cost of twenty three thousand nine hundred eighty two dollars and eighty cents for the purchase of granite curbing for the paved twenty twenty four bank.
So moved.
Amy, unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
So this next one is a approval of three contracts with Keith D Simpson Associates Landscape Architect. Um, the first is the New Canaan Nature Center, the garden area. We had a uh, problem with the garden area back uh, last year where there was a, we found lead in the area. We had to remediate it. So now we're looking at trying to see what we can do with the.
This was where the herb garden was, right?
Herb garden.
Yeah, that's a shame.
That's correct. Uh, the second one is uh, at Waveney House itself, the western parking lot. If you're looking at Waveney House, the right hand side parking lot, that's considered the western parking lot. Uh, when that was put in originally, uh, it was actually supposed to be a mirror image of itself. So if you look at it, we've got parking on one side, you can come in and park on the left hand side. We kind of, the nagel parking along the, along the guide rail there, but it was supposed to be a sistered parking lot. That's why it's completely inefficient for parking itself. It's very difficult to decide where you're gonna be, put people park all over the grass. This was a concern from, when we had our, our walk through with the Department of Justice and the fact that the grades from the handicap spaces over and into the house are not necessarily um, to the right grade, right? They're not in the right cross slope, they're not, not the right grade itself. So we asked Keith to come in and give us an overall layout plan for what it would be to try to maximize the spaces, even in fact, to get us anomaly at the time and make sure that the grades are correct so we can then satisfy the department's concerns. And then along with that, across the street, um, uh, we're looking at redoing the playground area itself. While we have a design for the playground and, and the athletic area, we don't have an overall look as to that entire parcel. So in between the parking lot and the, and the road itself, it's a very large green space, but we would like to then kind of make its own parkway, if you will. If we're gonna spend that amount of money and raise the funds to, to do the playground area and the athletic facility with it, we should look at some benching, some other things, some, some possible pathways for connectivity, things of that nature. And we're asking Keith to come in and give us an overall look um, for that area so that we can say, we just didn't haphazardly place the playground or, or the athletic uh, area inside this. We want to look at it holistically. And we had some concerns from the conservancy looking from the house towards the playground area to make sure that there was some adequate screening to then shave the house or shield the house from the playground area. So the playground itself will be muted colors and the heights of it won't be that tall. Um, overall, so we think we're, we're satisfying some of those needs, but we want to have someone take a look holistically at the area.
So is this in concert with the conservancy? So Keith, so the conservancy is good with Keith?
The Keith, yes, they are.
The point person.
That's correct. And then when we come forward with him, when, when we go forward with the original schematic design, we'll go meet with the conservancy to make sure that they're comfortable with the design itself.
I have just a general question. How do you come up with, what's the right amount for a design? Um, you know, how do you come up with what's the appropriate amount to charge? I, I know that sounds like a silly question, but it's like every time we turn around, something's just an even number. It's six thousand, it's four thousand. I, I have no idea.
Historically, we were always looking at something under five thousand dollars. We thought was fair, but that was probably ten years ago pricing. So now it's a little bit more. I can tell you that right now, we, we uh, we contracted with six separate landscape architects last year. Um, we've got four under contract this year. Two others are working for the conservancy directly, so that makes six total again. Um, and Keith, he's probably second or third, probably third on the uh, the amount of money spent. You know, but he's probably number one on the number of projects itself. His pricing is very competitive and he's in town, which makes him very uh, it's a, it's a great clue for us because he knows every single area we're looking at. Um, and he does a nice job and he has the view of what we're looking at, what the town is looking for from our parcels and from our areas. Uh, we've had other landscape architects come in and try to use utilize their design in our parts or in our areas, not necessarily what the town was looking for at the time. Uh, so, yeah, he's done, he's done some excellent work for us in the past and expect to do in the future. And his pricing is very, very uh, I won't call it cheap because that sounds, it's a terrible word, but inexpensive as far as it goes for the cost of a principal and the cost of uh, of his associate for their cost, their hourly wage is much less than the hourly wages we're seeing across the board for other landscape architects.
And, and same question, the nature center is, is happy that Keith would be the one taking a look at that.
Yeah.
It's such a shame up there, but.
It is, it's, you know, it's unfortunate, but we're trying to.
Figure it out.
At least figure it out and, and at least make it nice again, right? So it was a nice community. At least figure it out and and at least make it nice again, right? So it was a nice community garden. It was a nice herb garden. And now we have this expansive area of nothing.
Gravel.
Try to make something beautiful out of what 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 occurred. Uh, so, yeah, that's what it was.
Any other questions?
That's it. I mean, Keith's institutional knowledge of what New Canaan needs is he's been doing it for a long, decades and decades.
I'll be honest with you. I one time about about ten years ago, twelve years ago, I had to come up with a parking lot design for a Latin Community Center. That extra leg, that that third leg. And uh I was at a town council meeting and they were speaking about what are we gonna do for additional parking? So we'll have to take a look at it. And I got a call the next morning. He said, I already have a plan. And he handed me the plan for a bone off and it was completely ready to go to bid. And it's what you see out there now, the design. You see out there now, we paid zero dollars for it at the time. So he's looked at other areas, done the exact same thing multiple times. So uh, I think he's, I think he's an asset.
Yeah. And and this money's in your budget.
Money's your budget. That's correct.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into contracts with Keith E. Simpson Associates, Inc. in the amounts of for New Canaan Nature Center under the garden area, six thousand dollars for Waveney Park Western Parking Lot, forty five hundred dollars and for the Waveney Park proposed playground area, sixty five hundred dollars.
So much.
Same. Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tiger.
So it's a design development for the boardwalk. She made a proposed wetland boardwalk um at Irwin Park. We had Richard Seagan, Richard Seagan did the original master plan and then did the plan for all the the trails throughout there. So it's a it's a nice fit to have them come back in and do this portion or design this portion. It was part of the original master plan. Wasn't implemented at the time due to cost. Uh, and now um the park is booming and I think it's another little area that we should uh we should explore. Uh, so we just recently, I mean, they did schematic design work for us and now they're uh looking to finalize the design. We'll be going to wetlands in March um for for it and will likely have to go to ENZ for a site plan application as well. Um, so uh, this is their uh their fee thirteen thousand six hundred for the design development. Then permitting itself is based on an hourly basis as to how much is necessary. We try to carry the predominant load from the permitting side. They give us the plans. They give us some of the information that we need, but we fill out the permitting. We try to do um, everything on our end to try to lessen that amount. Uh, so it's a total of twenty two thousand four fifty and the funds are currently available in uh in this uh design.
Any questions? Just that it wa- it's a not, I mean, they have hourly rates on some of the stuff, so it's not to exceed.
It's, yeah, well, yes, that's correct. If you look on the backside, you'll see there, you'll see our hourly rate.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, just because.
Right.
It's just so it's not to exceed. Okay.
See, I didn't put a contingency in. That's exactly where it is.
Okay. And and we um, the the permitting part, we won't pay that until we get to the point.
That's forever. Yeah. So we've had a little bit of effort now trying to get the wetland application going forward. And then actually during the presentation, they'll have time associated with it. We don't have them come down. We try to have them so that they're upstate. So we try to have them stay at home, you know, similar to all the projects when they work on Ducking Force, it's the exact same thing. They uh through the ZBA and through the others, they uh they did it to uh so it's all.
So these permitting fees were paying ourselves, right? Yeah.
No, the fee is well paid for the architect to.
Yeah.
For his work towards getting a permit from the town. That's correct.
Right, but do do we actually, yeah, I see what you're saying. We're paying. And like, so the actual, is there a permitting fee that we, the town, are paying the town?
We don't pay.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to get. It's a fair question. It is a fair question.
Building permit, you don't pay PNC.
Just making sure. But we have to pay the work to get us to that point, which makes sense. Okay, thanks.
And just to be clear, Tiger, this is the project that we've been talking about for a couple of years, getting a boardwalk put through up in Irwin.
That's correct.
We've talked about it at length. Garden Club's raised a lot of money. They've they've uh brought it to different towns and boards and, you know. So we're moving along, which is good news. They've worked really hard to get it to this point.
Yeah.
And the town council approved a hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy five thousand.
Yeah.
Toward this project. So this goes against what was approved.
Right. Yeah, so it's in the works. Good.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve um a request from the Department of Public Works in conjunction with the Canaan Garden Club to enter into a contract with Richter and Seegan Landscape Architects the amount of twenty two thousand four hundred fifty dollars for design development and permitting phases of the proposed wetland boardwalk at Irwin Park. Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Okay, Waveney Paddle Lodge Parking Lot.
So this, yeah, right. So this is, thank you. This is a uh I guess RKW to come give us a proposal for survey of the wet Wavingy Paddle Lodge parking area. Um, so this is the parking lot between paddle and the pool. Uh, and during uh our review with the Department of Justice, the the safety space, the chances probably have, whether the grades themselves or the state itself is is very good. It's the path and travel to the paddle lodge. So as you're going to your areas, um, don't be, don't be gray and crossflow. Uh, so we asked them to come in, give an entire look of the parking lots since we're we're gonna be be doing that parking lot next year, year after, to come forward with a plan uh to make sure that the grades are correct and will satisfy the department's needs, uh, both the department's needs, I should say. RKW has extensive knowledge in Waveney Park itself throughout the town. So instead of asking another consultant to come in, just work and then have them try to come up to speed, get their own control points out there, things of that nature, we uh typically default to RKW and uh, we bid on a couple of projects in the past and they were very close right there with the other bidders, which would say the other surveyors that were out there. We bid me part holistically and they were very close, like almost to to a person.
Great.
So.
And we get a uh, any question, any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with RKW Land Surveying in the amount of forty one hundred dollars to survey the paddle lodges, parking lot and surrounding area. Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Waveney Carriage Barn.
Right, so this is a very similar situation, only different location over the carriage barn itself. We have the exact same situation. Yes, RKW is something we can sort of hold in this area.
Okay, perfect. Can I get any questions?
Yep.
Can I get a motion to approve a request from Department of Public Works in partnership with the Carriage Barn Arts Center to enter into a contract with RKW Land Surveying seventeen hundred dollars to survey the Waveney Carriage Barn and Patio and surrounding area. Steve, Amy, unanimous. Hey, Tiger, can you remember, I mean, what we put in the budget for a various ADA compliance?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, the current. Two fifty. This is all within that.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Right, so this next one is uh some additional fence work at Bristow. What we're seeing is that the deer are still able to overtop the fence itself. So we'd like to put uh three cables on the top of the fence and basically extend the fence by about two feet. We have a lot of plantings that we know on that were donated and the the deer themselves are starting to uh enjoy themselves inside the park.
Okay.
Um, so this stretch along the railroad uh is our primary means of access into the parks. We'd like to have the uh fencing extended. We won't be extending the fabric. It's just a three cable rail at the top.
Great.
Um, so we asked Dan to come in. We came in, I added a five hundred dollars just in case there was an extra foot or two that had to go, but I did put in fifteen percent as though, you know, I need a little bit of money just in case.
Yes, Swenson should not have a lot of contingencies.
It's just along the train track.
Yes.
I asked to go an additional ten feet or two feet. I wanted to have it.
It's just along the train track.
Just along.
Yeah, so you hope you'll see it from the.
Yeah, we won't look like a prison.
Yeah.
Won't look like a prison on.
It's depressing to think of this.
Yes, and and this is gonna sound hot, but there there's no like from an uh animal welfare, there's no risk of an animal being stuck around the corner, may on Greenlee. We've had bad things with deer jumping over pokey fences.
I saw it in the road. It uh, lovely fishers.
We won't have any of that. They'll just bounce off.
Yes.
Yeah, I I know.
Risk of it. There there always is a risk.
Sure, but a low one.
But there's a little of risk.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Gannon Rustic Fence in the amount of thirty three thousand three hundred twenty dollars plus a contingency of five hundred dollars for a total cost of three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. The project entails the installation of a hundred.
This is coming from, I believe it's coming from the friends of Bristow. No, it's kind of some parts part of the budget.
Yeah. Um, Steve. Amy, it's unanimous. Okay.
So the last item is uh an increase to the line of purchase order from Madison Supply for uh drainage pipe and uh other appurtenances for the highway department. We were typically buying from two separate uh uh suppliers, one to try to make sure that we had two always two suppliers available in case one didn't have any anything, we could go to another. Utilize just one supplier overall. The next time you call a guy says, yeah, I can get it for you. The unfortunate thing is that one of the suppliers, Ferguson, is running into problems at present, providing a work. So we uh we're asking for the amount of money that we typically spend combined to be um, brought just for Madison Supply. So uh the combined prior variables for both Ferguson and Madison were sixteen thousand five hundred. Um, our three-year average is around thirty four thousand dollars, which asking for an additional amount of thirty thousand dollars for a total of forty six thousand five hundred. That's the estimate we're going to carry through the rest. And the ones that are available on the highway department operating.
So why is it so much higher? I mean, that's that's, you know, ten thousand more than what our three-year average is from the.
We're thinking, well, because our our the amount of drainage that we've been able to do and right now, we we have some areas where the we're we're feeling the 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 need. So when I ask the highway department, they need this thirty thousand.
You're having drainage.
If we don't need it, we're not gonna spend it. And then the the pipe also doesn't feel bad. You know, if we had, you put it for stock to see, like we put it.
Okay, like our terms. Okay, yep.
Right, exactly. Won't feel bad. We will just be able to utilize it.
So is this uh again, just a separate note about the policy? Is this like what we just did with Alby? Is that why we're doing this?
It's well, so because, well, one, this is thirty thousand dollars. So that should come to us anyway, but um but we are having, if they go over, um, then once they are over the traditional where I sign, because you'll notice there's some uh POs in here that I had signed, but then Ann noticed that once I'd signed it, that actual amount had triggered that the purchase order was above the threshold where I should just, you know, the combined, not that individual one, but the combined purchase orders that we have done with that vendor had exceeded what the amount that I, you know, so it's just a transparency thing. I mean, if we, if you guys decide over time, you don't want me to do that.
That's good.
You know, accounting.
Just three minutes a week, that's all.
I know, this is a big one because I think there's a lot that was in the backlog. I think what's.
Overall amount for, right, this is exactly what we're also at that point now during the year where we're now right trip over that the overall combined amount of ten thousand dollars. That's where we're.
Right, and it and it's also like for next year, the departments will be planning for this kind of process and there'll be a a larger upfront request. So I I think it's just we're feeling the pain of the transition in the process. So, sorry, guys. I'm enjoying your time together.
I didn't mention also, but both these are on the Connecticut State pricing. So regardless of the supplier, we usually get the same price.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? If not, if I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Williams, now that's on the page, sorry. On the wrong page. Approval of requests from the Highway Department to increase a previously approved blanket purchase order with Madam's Madison Supply in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, which will bring the total contract to forty six thousand five hundred dollars uh for drainage materials needed for various projects. Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Okay, Cheryl. Thank you, Tiger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are here to present the first position for the Police Department for a police maintenance custodian. In the past, we have had Frank Toney at that position who passed away in the new position. We looked at the position as well. As they have moved, they're now in a building that is requiring a little less than what previous position required. Uh, they agreed to go a part-time position. So the next two years, uh, we are recommending a part-time position and then a little look at the needs forward. So we put a part-time application out. Uh, there was thirty one applicants. We interviewed nine and we would like to recommend Jerome Anderson. Um, who has got uh my variety of um experience in working with others, um, working at companies, being a laborer, and we felt after all the interviews, he would be the best candidate.
Any questions? How how many hours would, as I think?
About um twenty one, twenty two, it'd be like three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, seven hours.
And is this headcount, it's in the town headcount, not the police department headcount? Or where where's it, where's the um?
It's in the town because it's not um one of our uniform officers. So it goes on the town headcount. So it's gone from a full-time to a part-time. But I don't want to sit here and say in two years, when they move to the new building, they're gonna need to probably go back to that.
Yeah, one of the biggest things, because it's a rental, they have a landlord who covers a lot of the big bigger issues, but we do need somebody refining like just for day-to-day, some of the company vendors throughout the building when we, there are repairs that need to be made. Shuttle cars back and forth for service. Uh, there's a bunch of little things that um we absolutely need somebody there for, but on a part-time per basis would be fine.
My friend was, Fred seemed to be busy like oh, ten hours a day. So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff.
For a time, it it just didn't work. So I think this will be a good replacement until we.
Yeah, and to that point, they've been fantastic with helping us with traffic counters and getting those up. Uh, but it it ends up becoming like a big ask. We need them weekly. They have their own obligations to worry about. This person would help take care of that. Uh, to be able.
All right.
All right, great. Um, there's no other questions? Could I get the a motion to approve a request from Human Resources Director to hire Jerome Anderson as a part-time police maintenance custodian? Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, and then Cheryl.
The next one is Jeff Manella in the Highway Department. He has just passed his supervisory spray license, so he will be promoted to an equipment operator to supervisory spray um license within the Highway Department.
Any questions? All right, if not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Director to promote Jeffrey Manella to the position of Equipment Operator to supervisory spray license within the Highway Department. So Amy, Steve, unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And then appointments and reappointments. Can I um see before you, you have um I I guess we can just go through each, the Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee, TDAC. Um, she was some Kathleen Mat- Matterns. Um, I met her in my office. Um, she's great, young, new energy for TDAC, came by and recommended. Sure. Yep, Tucker. Any questions? Any question? All right, so could I get a motion to approve um the appointment of Catherine Mattern for a three-year term ending December first, twenty twenty four?
So much.
Second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you. Police Department Building Committee, appointment of Tom Turnteen.
I'm here to say something nice about. Not me, who?
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, Tom, Tom's been at meetings for a year plus. You're perfect.
Well, and also Tom's done so much in town already. I mean, he's 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 a legend. So I I fully endorse Tom's uh service and thank him for the time he's gonna put in here. So that's I'm sure Bill will welcome him.
Okay. All right, so could I get a motion to approve appointing Tom Turnteen to the Police Department Building Committee? Amy, Steve, it's unanimous. Thank you. Um, Parks and Rec Commission, reappointment of Lindsay Heron and Hank Green for three-year terms ending December first, twenty twenty six. Both of their terms were ending and they both expressed a desire to continue and um so.
They've done a great job so far.
They have.
It's a happy place.
Yes. So could I get a motion um?
So much.
Amy, second, um, of Lindsay and Hank Green for a three-year term sending December first. It's unanimous. Thank you. Um, Board of Finance, um James Yao's term has ended and um he expressed an interest in continuing his service. So if I could get a motion to reappoint James Yao as an alternate member for a two-year term ending December first, twenty twenty five.
That's amazing how quick that went. It's.
Well, it's only two years. It's like.
Alternates are two years.
Yeah.
James, James has done a great job and watching those meetings, uh, adds a lot to the conversation. So.
Yeah.
Thank you to James for his service and I will make the motion.
Thank you, Steve. Amy, it's unanimous. Okay. And Conservation Commission, reappointment of John Fusick and Susan Schweitzer for two-year terms ending December first, twenty twenty five. And I reached out to both of them. They expressed a desire to continue on the mission. So can I get a motion to?
So much. Second.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, and then you have on your tablets contracts under ten thousand dollars. Um, or ten thousand and under. Any questions?
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Yeah. Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move on to uh overpayments, approval of refunds or tax overpayments. Um, anybody have any questions? They just are. Yep. Okay. So um if I could get a motion to approve refunds and tax overpayments.
So much.
Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. And then um you have also the legal bills on your tablets. Um, so any questions or? Concerns? Okay, if not, could I get a motion to approve the legal fees? Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Okay, any, I have no comments. I have no comments today, any other comments? Okay, moving on, we have um, an executive session planned for today, so if. Uh, who's, who's the three of us? Tucker. Okay, so you need to leave.
Yeah, so it just makes.
Oh, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Second, it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Be right back.
I put seventy nine in quick.
Yeah, make me. So next to. And then you can end that one there.
They're going to.
Okay.
When you can end that one. Don't end it, just leave.
And so then it'll be like a very good circle.
So fast.
Seventy five thousand, so we won't be.
He's in a suit. Okay, we're back. Okay. Um, could I get a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding among certain local institutions regarding security procedures. After all, to manage evacuation events. So look, second, Steve, it's unanimous, thank you very much. And could I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Amy.
Not before eleven.
How fast rounds.
No, you're you're really fast, thank you guys, thank you very much.
Did you, did you hear all of a sudden Deanna went like, you know, when you you play back something, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do one point five speed.